John, oops, can you see if you can turn on your camera?
Okay, hi, welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, February 28th, 2023. This meeting is called the Order. I'll request staff roll call who are present and who are not.
Yes, Commissioner Higman.
Here.
I'm sorry, I have your choice. Commissioner Mercado is absent. Commissioner Pravat Ali?
Here.
Is attending virtually. Commissioner Shink?
I am here.
Commissioner Shalk?
Here.
And Chair Saudi?
Here. Okay, we'll move to the order of the agenda. Are any changes, are there any changes to the order of the agenda? Nope. Okay. Next, we'll move to meeting procedures. I'd like to ask staff to address how the public will comment, public comment will work this evening. Please note that due to a number of folks in attendance, oh, nope, we're not doing that. Okay.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Saudi. The meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube, and members of the public can provide public comment by phone by calling 669-444-9171 and using the meeting ID 85094759457 pound and pressing star nine to raise your hand for comment. Or you can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda and use the raise a hand feature through Zoom. If you experience technical difficulties, please email planningpubliccomment@cityofsanrefell.org. Displayed on the podium and at the projector is a timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you reside in or it from outside of San Rafael. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. Select the Live Transcript button on the Zoom to enable this feature. In response to Assembly Bill 361, the City of San Rafael is offering a teleconference without complying with procedures requirements of Government Code Section 544953B3. So this meeting is being recorded and is being held in person virtually using Zoom and is being streamed live to YouTube at www.youtube.com/cityofsanrefell. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Now we'll describe the meeting procedures. We'll begin with a staff report. Members of the public will be invited to speak. You will have two minutes for public comment. Are we, are we doing two or should we do three?
That is at the chair's discretion.
Okay, I think we'll, we'll take it back to three since we probably, it doesn't look like we have a full house and it's kind of a big document. Commissioners will have the opportunity to ask questions of staff, applicant, or public after each segment. We'll close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and action if necessary. Next on the agenda is urgent communication. This is a time for anyone with urgent communication on a topic not on the agenda to address the commission at this time. Would anyone like to provide an urgent item?
I am hoping that you can read the next.
Yeah, okay, I was gonna wait and see. Okay. Do we have anybody on YouTube or with their hand raised?
If you'd like to speak, and no one is dialing in, but for those in attendance, please use the raise the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. And I guess I should offer that to our members in the audience as well. If you wish to speak on items not on the agenda, please step up to the podium.
Okay, doesn't look like we have any takers. I'd like to announce that due to an error in noticing, the used permit revocation hearing for George's nightclub on 842 Forest Street, which was intended to be heard this evening, has been rescheduled and will be renoticed for the March 28th Planning Commission hearing. If there is anyone in attendance tonight who came for this item or is online for this item, you're welcome to speak at this time. Staff will let us know how to participate.
So again, if anyone is here, a revocation hearing, a notice went out, but it was incorrectly noticed. So we have continued that to March 28th, and it will be renoticed. That said, if there is anyone here, since the item is not on the agenda, but if you would like to speak on it, please step up to the podium and/or use the raise the hand icon. And no one wishes to speak on this.
Great. Well, now move on to the consent calendar, which has two items. First, approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes of January 24th, 2023. Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar?
If you wish to comment on the consent calendar, please use the raise the hand icon and/or come up to the podium. No one wishes to speak.
Okay, great. Back to number one. Would anyone like to entertain a motion to approve or for the Planning Commission meeting minutes of January 24th?
Commissioner Higman, I move to approve the meetings, the meeting minutes.
Commissioner Simoodzy, I second.
I'm sorry. Leslie, can you please provide roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Mercado is absent. Commissioner Pravat Ali?
Yes.
Commissioner Simoodzy?
Yes.
Commissioner Shalk?
Yes.
Vice Chair Higman?
Yes.
And Chair Saudi?
Yes. Our next item is a presentation of the Annual Progress Report on the Status of Policies and Programs Identified in the City's General Plan and the City's Progress Towards Meeting Its Share of the Regional Housing Need Allocation, issued by the Association of Bay Area Governments. Can we please have our staff report?
Yes, and I would like to introduce Monica Lee, who is a senior planner and joined our team in July of last year. And she will be presenting tonight. And I do want to just acknowledge that our, our whole team is in attendance tonight, and that includes Director Alicia Dudassey and Alexis Kaptanian, as well as our new Assistant Director of Community Development, Chris Hess, who is in, who is our guru on housing and homelessness. So, welcome to you all.
Thank you, Leslie. Good evening, Chair Saudi and members of the commission. It's very nice to finally meet you all. Good evening, members of the public and fellow staff. I'm happy to present tonight the General Plan Annual Progress Report and the Housing Element Progress Report for 2022. Please excuse me while I share my screen. So first I will be presenting background information, some general plan program highlights, the regional, the city's progress, the city's arena progress, and the housing element program highlights, the 2023, 2031 housing element updates, and options for the Planning Commission to consider. Government Code Section 65400 require that jurisdictions prepare an annual progress report on the status of the city's general plan. Additionally, additionally, the government code includes specific requirements for preparing a housing element APR, which is reported on a form prescribed by HCD. The general plan programs detailed in Attachment 1, pages 16 to 144 of the General Plan Staff Report provide key programs and initiatives the city undertook in 2022. The information was compiled from the various departments responsible for implementing the general plan programs pertaining to their functions and oversight. Highlighted here are just some of the accomplishments the city achieved in 2022, including spearheaded a community engagement effort and formed a stakeholder committee to update the Canal Community-Based Transportation Plan, amended the municipal code to include 2022 California REACH codes that helped drive greenhouse gas reductions, launched the Parks and Recreation Master Plan process, prepared the flood risks and sea level rise adaptation report, and incorporated it into the General Plan 2040. This is a summary table, which total all permits entitled permitted and completed in 2022. There was an error on the spreadsheet. In 2022, 42 ADUs were entitled, not 26, and a total of 332 units were entitled, not 316. Our city council will be receiving the corrected version for the March 20th city council meeting. Some key projects entitled in 2020, 2022 included ADI Vivian Street, 71 units, Los Gamos Drive Apartments, which includes 192 units, and other smaller projects entitled in 2022 include Brookdale Apartments, which includes 10 units, and 1380 Lincoln, which includes nine units. Table B is a summary of prior permitting activities in the current planning cycle, including permitting activity in 2022. In 2022, there was a total of 147 building permits issued. The General Plan Housing Element Programs detailed in Attachment 1, pages 8 through 15 in the staff report include key programs and initiative the city undertook in 2022. Highlighted here are just some of the accomplishments the city achieved in 2022, including funded 66 units of affordable senior housing at the Vivalon Healthy Aging Campus Project at 999 Third Street, awarded $400,000 to Canal Alliance for the acquisition of an existing apartment building to preserve affordable housing and prevent tenant displacement, secured $522,000 in grant funding for intensive case management to help in housing placement through the state's encampment resolution fund, and adopted and updated affordable housing in Luffy based on a joint study completed with other Marinier jurisdictions. The city submitted its draft 2023/2031 Housing Element for review on December 20th, 2022. After the city received HCD's comments, anticipated to be received in March, the document will be revised and public review draft will be considered for adoption. Government Code Section 65400 states that after the legislative body has adopted all or part of a general plan, the planning agency may make recommendations to city council regarding reasonable and practical means for implementing the general plan. The Planning Commission has the following options. Accept the General Plan Annual Progress Report for 2022 and direct staff to present the report to city council at a public meeting, which is the staff recommended option. Direct staff to return with more information or to take no action. This concludes the end of the staff report. Feel free to ask staff any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there? Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong agenda item. I, where am I? I think Leslie. Oh, you did know that. Okay. Are there any questions from the commissioners? We'll save any comments for discussion after the public hearing, so we'll have an opportunity to talk afterwards if we need to. Leslie, can you open the public hearing?
Yes, if you'd like to speak on this item, please step up to the dais or the podium. As well, if you're participating via Zoom, please use the raise the hand icon.
Johnson Reynolds, you will have three minutes to speak.
Yeah, this is Johnson Reynolds. I live in the Canal area. I'm a member of Pershing, I live at this church. Yeah, the housing element up to 2031 has been approved by the city council, and it's in process. So it met the timeline correctly, and there's no questions about it from the planning commission, and we're moving forward on that. When does it actually have to be in and accepted by, I guess, the state? Is that what we talked about? That's my question. I just have a question. I want to make sure that we're on track and moving forward to make sure that that's accepted appropriately at the proper timeline. That's my question.
Okay, Johnson, do you have any additional comments?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm glad.
Just a question.
What's included in that is fine. Vivalon and the Canal, the Alliance place. And I think you're working on Los Gamos too, but I'm not sure that was mentioned in your report. There's other things that were mentioned maybe, but I don't know. San Quentin is not part of your, right? The San Quentin teachers and place, it's approved by the, it's passed the ERA, but I don't know. Those are the questions.
Okay, thank you, Johnson. We're not allowed, we're not going to be directly answering the questions at this moment, but we'll go ahead and ask staff to address that. Or can we have her do it now, I guess?
Why don't we wait till the end of public comment?
I agree, yeah.
Writing down the questions. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Next up is Bill Carney.
Good evening, commissioners. This is Bill Carney. I'm Chair of Sustainable San Rafael. And we welcome the city's intention to complete its update of San Rafael's tree ordinance in 2023, as indicated in the city council's goals for fiscal year 2223, and as noted in the document that you're considering this evening. For fiscal year 2324, we ask that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council that the city undertake two additional general plan 2040 programs called for in that, in that ordinance that is currently pending. These are a comprehensive tree master plan and inventory. And this is pursuant to CDP 3.5A and CDP 3.5B. And I've submitted these, all these numbers I'm about to read to staff, so I won't read the numbers themselves. But basically, it's requested you recommend a comprehensive tree master plan and inventory pursuant to the general plan. And these would incorporate the tree-related elements of the city's climate change action plan, which is another recommendation of the general plan. Name, oh, and also that, and this plan, master plan, would provide critical guidance to successful implementation both of the new tree ordinance and of the remaining urban forestry programs in the general plan, including tree preservation, street tree maintenance, tree maintenance for public safety, tree replacement due to sidewalk damage, and trees for new development. And those programs encompass 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 additional general plan implementations. But I want to stress that we start with the general plan. That's to provide guidance to this, the further implementation of the general plan. We need a tree master plan and inventory to provide a comprehensive and cost-effective framework to guide the implementation of this full range of general plan tree programs. We want, at the end of the day, a comprehensive urban forestry program implemented pursuant to the general plan. So I requested you recommend that to council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate your comment. Do we have any other comments? Anybody else on the line?
If anyone else wishes to speak, please use the raise the hand icon. And I will give it a minute, and no one else is wishing to speak on this item.
Okay, great. I think this is a good time for staff then to address that first question. And I guess if you have anything on Bill's comments as well, it'd be great.
Thank you, Chair Saudi. I can, I can address Mr. Reynolds' question. So I would like to clarify, Mr. Reynolds is correct. The draft 2023/2031 Housing Element Update was submitted December 20th, 2022. For tonight's meeting, the discussion was for the General Plan Annual Progress Report and Housing Element Progress Report, which is different from, from the draft 2022/2023 Housing Element Update. That pertains to the next housing cycle, and we're just simply providing an update on the current housing cycle.
Thank you for that clarification. I think people are just concerned about meeting, you know, like all the byright kind of laws that are being, you know, there's, there's a lot of talk about that in the media, so.
I can kind of expand on what Monica just said. So we did submit a housing element to the state in December. We expect to hear back in March, mid-March, March, by March 25th. So our plan is to kind of be prepared to respond to those, whatever Department of Housing and Community Development comments are, and bring the housing element to your planning commission soon after, and then city council soon after that, and hope to adopt the housing element by May of this year. So that's kind of, I think, responding to the question that Mr. Reynolds had. If I may, I'd also like to respond to Bill Carney's comment, and that is that we are continuing to respond to the request to look into an ordinance, a tree ordinance. Our Public Works Department has been very busy. We have a number of projects, if you noticed, in the general plan progress report. They've been, they've, you know, done quite a bit of work this year and continue to do so. Their plan is to continue evaluating, putting together an assessment of existing trees within the city. So that's, that's coming. And yeah, I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions about that as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I think we're gonna make sure we close the public hearing now. And so I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners for any comment or discussion. Commissioner Shalk, would you like to start?
Thank you. Um, I just have a couple of questions. One of them was just in regards to the SB 35. I was just curious, what is considered, just from my own learning, what is considered sufficient progress on above moderate housing needs? Because I know we, I think it was about 55 this year compared to 22 last year, and I'm curious as to what, I know our overarching goal, but do we have goals set for each year specifically? Also moving forward. Sorry, that's a few questions related.
Okay, I didn't know if staff was gonna respond to that. Yeah, I think that'd be great, yeah.
So regarding the SB 35 determination, if that is what you're speaking to. So, so HCD, after each, after each jurisdiction submits their general plan annual progress report and their housing element annual progress report, what they do is they prorate what our arena would be. And, and based on what we submit in terms of our housing data, they make a determination as to whether we have met the prorated arena for that year. And so we, we did not, I mean, the SB 35 determination was based on our report that we submitted last year in 2021. our report that we submitted last year in 2021. And, and that's why they found us to be subject to SB 35 because we did not meet our prorated RENA.
Got it. Thank you. Um, and just one more related question. Um, I, I read that we, we changed our, our goal from 20% to 10% i- in order to incentivize developers more. Um, what other, just, I'd love to understand, like, what other incentives are we, sorry?
Yeah, that's great. Um, there's, yeah, there are a number of things that the city council has been working to, working on in terms of removing barriers to housing. Um, you, I think, early last year, maybe it was in, yeah, early last year, you, um, received a presentation on a combining the design review board, planning commission, presentations, um, and hearings for certain projects. Um, that, that effort was intended to be a pilot program to see how that works and plays out and to see whether expanding that program to larger projects to facilitate, um, the, the development, the entitlement process for housing, um, would be. Um, the other things we've looked at, um, are looking at, just trying to remember what's in our policy documents. Uh, some things that the city council has, um, asked staff to look at is, you know, revising the zoning code to allow for residential densities, um, in, for properties that are 5,000 square feet or less. Previously, we had, um, those properties were only allowed to have single-family homes developed on those properties, even though those properties were actually zoned for multiple, um, developments, multiple residential development. And so, um, in removing that barrier, properties can now come in. If they're 5,000 square feet or less, they could come in and actually develop at the densities that they are, um, assigned. Um, I'm trying to think of other things that the city council has done. Um, we encourage, we kind of consistently look at the way we operate. So some of the things that we're doing, excuse me, some of the things that we're doing are actually policy changes at the city council a little, but other things are just, you know, reevaluating how we operate. Um, as an example, something that we are looking at now, um, that we've been doing actually at the city is we have a use permit process for certain projects that require just an administrator review. Um, and so if you're in a commercial district and are a commercial building, you're allowed to, um, um, convert the units, the, the use of the building into residential units. That requires a use permit. That used to take about three months or so. But the change in the way we process this application, it could be as quick as four weeks. So it's, some of the stuff that we're doing are policy changes and some of the stuff that we're doing are just process change. So does that help answer your question?
That does help. Thank you. I, um, I know one of the questions was any recommendations that we would have in terms of how to revise or elaborate on the plan, and I feel like elaborating more on, on that would be helpful. But thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shock. Commissioner Samuti?
Yeah, if we could, uh, swing over to table two, uh, the summary table for the calendar year 2022, um, entitled versus permits versus completed. So a couple of questions there. Uh, first question is, from the standpoint of projects completed and what we're evaluated on from a RENA perspective, is there any consideration from the state with regards to the, um, issues of the financing environment? Um, as I imagine that that might have an impact, particularly in the larger projects getting completed through that, and, you know, does that, uh, you know, do we get negatively impacted by, you know, projects just sort of not meeting financial bars?
Um, I think I understand what you're asking. You're asking if the state gives us any leniency for the, um, given the financial situation?
Yeah, for example, if, if entitled projects or permitted projects just failed to receive financing or financing falls through, or just some issue that's essentially related to macro factors.
So part of, so our, the way we, um, are reporting now has changed dramatically over the past 10 years. Um, in previous cycles, we were just reporting the number of building permits issued and that's it. And over time, we started kind of, um, transitioning into having to provide more information. I think the information that we're providing now is really, um, allowing us to share with HCD, um, where the, where the stall is. So if we're demonstrating that we're entitling projects, we're permitting projects, and then nothing happens, then it's clearly something else that's happening.
Yep.
Um, but no, to answer your question, currently, there is no leniency. If, uh, we entitle a project and, um, permits are submitted or no permits are ever, um, applied for, um, there's no, we, uh, HCD doesn't give us, give us a break. I don't, but, but you bring up a really good point. We have projects that we've entitled over the past couple of years that, um, we're just not seeing yet. And, you know, we check in every once in a while and there have been some concerns over supply cha- you know, supply chain issues. There have been construction cost issues. And currently, we are in, um, seeing that there's an increase in interest rates. So that's, all of those things contribute to, you know, somebody having, developers having difficulty with development. So, um, we continue to look for solutions, but
Yeah.
some things are really kind of out of our, out of our hands.
Yeah. So, uh, I guess there's a speculation at this point, but I imagine that the state would see similar patterns across multiple cities. And I imagine that might be subject to legislative review in terms of penalties or fines. So I, I don't think I, does it, does it seem as if any issues that would arise from not meeting numbers be acted upon quickly, or is that something that's going to be sort of reviewed at a sort of aggregated level, uh, by legislature? Or do you have no idea? I mean, this is like.
That's a good question, yeah. I mean, I think, um, similar to the way the city is trying to, you know, remove those things that we can, you know, the governmental constraints. Um, you know, if we can kind of eliminate the timeframe and the, you know, obligations on this end, the costs associated with, you know, con- high construction costs and interest rates might be less impactful because we've, you know, gone through a really quick process. Um, we consistently have heard over time that developers, you know, concern has been, you know, time is money. You know, if you're, if you're holding a loan over a one-year period versus a one-month period, it's a significant, um, cost, um, impact, so.
So you, very last question, you, you mentioned that you guys will try to make an effort to at least highlight what we're doing at the city's perspective, um, and sort of paint a picture, I guess, for the state, for everything else. Maybe one thought or recommendation is, from this report at least, it didn't seem very clear that it was sort of outlined, but it might be helpful to just, uh, even like a voice of customer type of thing, just sort of, sort of outline what issues you're hearing from developers in terms of projects that aren't happening. Um, just, again, to just make a, a clearer picture and provide a data point to the state.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you. Great. I'm gonna stay up here.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, Vice Chair.
I do not, but John does.
Okay, John does. Oh, yeah, he has his hand raised. I noticed that earlier. I was gonna try to get everybody in the room. Go ahead, Commissioner Pravada.
Yeah, no problem. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry for not being able to join you in person. Um, yeah, I have just a couple of questions. Um, one is, uh, uh, how are the, how's our RENA progress, um, progressing against our goals, our expectations? Um, I apologize if I missed, there was a, if there was a slide on that, or, um, is, is there, are there some, I seem to recall there were some, um, some goals, right, some metrics?
Yes, um, I think Monica is gonna be bringing that up. Um, but you evaluate how many units we're, um, permitting every year. We get, we get, um, credits for permits issued. So if you look at this slide, um, each year, we identify how many units are being built. In 2022, um, or how many are being permitted. In 2022, we, um, issued 147 permits. Um, and you can see that the total um, permitted to date is 535. That means that we're still shy 472 units for the prior RENA cycle.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and is that, um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, we're, um, we're about to enter the new, um, eight-year cycle, um, with this new housing element update. So our number, as you know, has changed to,
Yeah.
uh, previously 1,007, has changed to 3,220. I might have that wrong.
Okay, so I'm, I think I, I, let me try to, um, read this back to you to, and you can let me know if I'm understanding it correctly. So the, the RENA goal is 1,007. Um, the permits to date are 535. And, um, those, of those 535, 472 are still, um, open and have not resulted in construction?
Of the 1,007, 472 have not been, we're, we're shy of that. So we didn't, we didn't reach our 1,007 unit goal.
Okay. Okay, and then that goal, that 1,007 unit goal is going up to 3,000 or something? Is that what you said? Yeah. Okay, uh, that's, it's good to know. Um, I mean, do, are there gonna be any state, any penalties or whatnot for not meeting that goal?
Um, you know, the, I, I think the penalties in the form of, right now are in the form of SB 35 and other, um, by right requirements. Um, that, you know, some SB 35 is kind of more jurisdictional depending on where you are with your RENA numbers. Other require, other legislation are applying statewide. Um, we have a number of new bills that were adopted last year that, um, are intended to, um, make development easier and remove additional barriers. So, um, at, at this point, there are no penalties. Um, I don't know what the future looks like.
Okay, yeah, I hear you. Uh, that's very, that's a huge challenge, that out, and the uncertainty doesn't make it easier. Um, my next question is, uh, about the actual, you know, progress to date about the new construction. And, um, in a way, this is kind, sort of like a, um, a complimentary, uh, question that, um, a compliment to the question that, uh, Commissioner Samutti asked, um, about the feedback from developers. I'm wondering, has there been, um, major feedback, uh, some sort of like headline feedback from the community about, um, the projects that have been completed? That, you know, and I know there's lots of feedback that we always get, so there's a lot of, there are a lot of details, but are you seeing any sort of trends that you feel are, um, significant enough to share with us, like either in favor or against?
Have been completed or that are not?
Yeah, that have been completed, yeah.
No, I, I, we don't, really typically don't hear a whole lot after completion. Um, I think the majority of the feedback we receive is typically, you know, pre-entitlement.
Mm-hmm, right.
You know, I haven't heard a whole lot of post-entitlement, post, you know, post-construction.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I mean, with, kind of where I was going with this, I know that, um, you know, having, there were people against ADUs, right? Um, and a lot of people against ADUs, a lot of people against, um, splitting up single-family homes into multi-units and, and whatnot. And it's, it seems good that we're, we haven't heard a lot of pushback after those projects have been completed. Um, is that, uh, do you feel like I'm sort of assessing the situation correctly? Like, are policies are, are, are being accepted by the community?
That, that's pretty accurate. And if you look at the number of ADUs that we've seen, you know, I mean, if you look at kind of the trends, we were seeing a handful of ADUs prior to 2017. I want to say maybe five a year, if that. Um, and then suddenly, we were seeing, you know, 19 to 20 per year. Last year, we saw 40 something, 42 applications. So my guess is that, um, a pretty significant majority of, of residents are realizing this is something that we could use, you know?
Yeah.
We're, um, seeing an aging population and, um, there's opportunity there for, um, either age, you know, multi-generational, um, at least ownership of properties or, or use of properties, if not, you know, same, within the same unit. So there's, there's definitely opportunity there. I think people are starting to see that. And, um, I haven't heard any complaints about ADUs.
Okay, yeah, that's great. That's, I feel like that's a huge success, even though the, the count is relatively small compared to where we need to go, but it seems like a very good sign to me. Yeah, um, and then my last question, and this could be, you know, sort of out of the scope of work of this report, which, and that's fine, just let me know, but I'm just curious about how homelessness figures into this report, if there's like, sort of like a comparison to the rate of homelessness, um, that will be updated based on, I think there's a yearly survey that occurs, if I recall correctly.
There is. There's a point in time survey. Um, I don't know whether that happened this year. It's usually every couple of, Chris, do you want to come up and share?
Yeah, and I can elaborate on the question. I'm just wondering if
January 22.
there's any sort of, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, Jan- January 22 was the last, um, point in time.
Yeah.
Um.
I, I was just wondering if we could see any sort of correlation to the increase in the number of, of units and, um, ideally a decrease in homelessness, even if it's a small decrease. I mean, I imagine you can't, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, um, you know, over time, we might be some, we might see some correlation. We have a number of, um, supportive housing units that have come online since, in the last couple of years. Um, and so it'll be interesting to kind of provide you with that kind of update in, in the next couple of years, see where we are.
Okay. Great. And then, um, and then just, is now a time, a good time for us to, or for me to ask about the, um, the tree ordinances that Bill Carney brought up? Should we address that, or?
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same thing. So if you want to go ahead and, um, talk about it, it's on, um, page 54 of item one. So if anyone at home is looking, or if anybody here is looking, I was able to find that exact page, so.
Um, so Public Works is in the process of, um, updating the tree ordinance. Um, there's, as I mentioned earlier, there's quite a number of programs that the Public Works is working on, um, and, and they continue to work on the tree ordinance as well, so that's coming. Um, in addition to that, they're in the middle of, I don't know if they've, contracts been approved and they're ready, moving forward, but they're in the middle of evaluating, assessing our, um, a number of things, including the number of street trees. Talk about, you know, curb ramps, um, light fixed, light fixtures. So they're in the process of doing kind of a full citywide assessment. Um, so Bill's comment is well-received. There's an effort. We're kind of moving forward, but it takes time. Um, so.
I guess my question is, um, and, and just for the sake of clarification, I think he was asking us to make a recommendation that the city council adopt two ordinances, one for a tree master plan and the other for an inventory. And, and if I'm understanding, um, what you're saying, Ali, it sounds like that work is already underway without those ordinances being, um, made, made into official policy. And I'm just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Public Works is working on a policy and I, I, forgive me, I don't really know if it's a ordinance or tree master plan, but something's in the process of being completed now. Um, and your planning commission, um, Chair Saudi, your commission could, um, make recommendations individually and staff would be happy to relay those, um, recommendations to the city council, um, for consideration as they move to, um, kind of look at the 2023, 2024. I think they're looking at four-year goals and objectives this coming fiscal year, so, um,
Okay.
you're definitely, that's something where we would be happy to, to, that information, we would be happy to provide to the city council. That's your recommendation.
Is, um, so I'm looking at the street tree master plan item in the report, and it says at DPW, um, you know, they've had community meetings and. and it says at DPW, um, you know, they've had community meetings and they're getting outside consultation. Um, but it sounds like they're including the potential to create and maintain a master, a street tree master plan. So it's not that they're actually going to be doing that. It's just that, um, it looks like they're looking at the potential for that. Um, did we, I didn't see any, um, letter from Bill or Sustainable Warren. Do we have all of his comments on record?
I'm gonna ask Monica.
No, I did not receive any comments.
So if I can just insert, we have the recording of this and I, I made notes on what
Yeah, I, I have as well. I just wanted to know if he was, you know, he seemed to have a lot of very specific points and I think we were all listening to them, but it, I mean, I think with that, with his comment, it, it seemed like it would be helpful for him to record it so that we can all maintain it.
I'd be happy to reach out to, to Bill and ask him for any written comments that he would like to forward to the city council as well.
Yeah, okay, great. Um, that sounds good.
Well, and if I may, um, so I'm thinking about, you know, making a, um, proposal for a resolution consistent with Bill's recommendation or, or ask. And, um, Ally, but I don't want to do that if you think that it's gonna throw a wrench in the public works, so to speak, work that they're already doing, you know what I mean? Um, I, I want it to be helpful and not a hindrance.
Yeah, I think so. Y- your action tonight is going to be recommending that the city council, uh, at this report, um, as well, receive the report. And, um, you know, part of what we're doing is if there are things that in, um, the general plan, um, programs that you think are important, um, those can be relayed to the city council and it's just the city council assess
Okay.
what the priorities are for the next, you know, coming, you know, couple of fiscal years and decide whether that's the thing that's gonna be the priority for that year. So, um, I don't, I don't feel like you're putting a wrench in anything. I think it's
I'm throwing a wrench in the public works?
Um, yeah, I mean, they're, you know, they're, they're priorities for sure and, and if that kind of aligns with what the priorities are for the coming fiscal year, then that, um, they're happy to do it.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Anything else? Are you good? Okay, Commissioner Shock, did you have an extra question?
I just had one question related to the ADUs. I was curious if we know how many of those are being rented out currently, or if that's gonna be part of the, the study that you'll be conducting?
We don't, um, have exact, the exact data of how many ADUs are being rented out. Um, sometimes we ask our, our applicants, um, if, if this is for, or sometimes the applicants disclose whether or not they're building for a family member when they speak with us, or whether they're planned to rent it out. But, um, sometimes, you know, things change and sometimes they don't rent it out and sometimes they do rent it out. Um, so we don't have the exact data on that. Um, yes, but, um, most of them we've indicated as, as they've been rented out.
Just to add on to what Monica mentioned, um, our draft housing element includes a program on ADUs and one of those sort of subtasks would be an ADU survey, um, to kind of look at exactly that, is this contributing to the housing supply? How are people actually using the ADUs?
But, thank you. That's exactly what I'm getting at, is, um, I'm curious if, if it is contributing. Um, so that's fantastic. Um, and then just one last minor recommendation. Um, I think in, in reading, um, this report, it would be really helpful if, um, it could be color-coded, like there's the, the, the progress. If that was color-coded by like, where are we green, where are we red, where are we yellow, like, I think it would be much easier to absorb. Um, even in the, like, table three in the very beginning, um, as far as housing goes, but also, um, all, all of the, the amazing initiatives, um, and projects that we have ongoing, um, I think it would be, yeah, just much easier to read and understand. Minor, but thank you.
Thank you for that suggestion, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Shock. Um, I, does anyone else want to follow-up questions on anything, comments? Okay. Uh, I had a question about, um, three three oh one Kerner. So I saw in the report that, I, I mean, I remember when we passed it and I know it's like a temporary shelter. Um, it looks like we're grappling with a funding gap. And so I wanted to know if there, like, if there's any, if there's anything being done about that? I mean, I'm guessing we're looking at trying to fill that, but what, what's the status? Cause that's, I mean, not only is that a real need for our city, but that seems to be a, um, that could be a good addition to this housing, you know, to our Rena numbers.
Um, Chair Saudi, can I ask for a little clarification on where, um, well, I'll just sort of preface by saying that the city, um, has supported the acquisition of thirty-three oh one Kerner by contributing funds to the county and then made, um, uh, an award from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to close a gap in funding, um, that existed. Um, because a lot of the projects saw an increase, like a spike in cost compared to their original performas. And so, um, nine nine third, nine third street, thirty-three oh one Kerner and one ninety mil all got gap funding awards from the city. Um, that project is now, the emergency shelter has closed and Kerner is looking at closing escrow like mid-March, which is really exciting. So that, that project is moving forward. I, um, I'm
Okay, I think I may have read the item wrong now that I'm looking back. It looks like, yeah, the city provided, yeah, additional eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, so that is going forward. So that's great.
It is, yeah.
So that's really good.
Yeah.
Okay, that was my, that was one of the bigger questions that I had. Um, and I also just wanted to, um, add that I think, you know, there's an importance of addressing Bill's comments. And I think, you know, as a city that has green initiatives and we should be really looking forward, it makes sense to, to really make sure we know, like, have an inventory of trees, know what we have, have a plan for maintaining them. Um, especially, you know, this year, we've, we've seen a lot of damage with trees and infrastructure. And I think just being able to know where we are and where we stand, um, and also have a plan to make sure our city stays, um, you know, green and lush in the, in the, um, downtown and other more suburban environments that are built out.
I agree.
Um.
Chairman Saudi, I had a couple of other questions that came up just while, actually based on your comment and, 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 uh, Commissioner Shock's comments.
Okay.
It's like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they relate to, um, below-market rate housing and homelessness again. And I'm wondering if, um, the report, um, or the update could touch on the, um, in-loofe fund, if that would be useful, um, to track, you know, the in-loofs that are being built up, um, in order to support below-market rate housing? And also, um, and then my other, um, question is whether or not it would be useful to, um, to track evictions? Um, because, uh, you know, in my, uh, work on the, um, housing element working group, I learned that there was, there seemed to be a direct correlation between evictions, um, and homelessness. Is that within the scope of, um,
Ally's gonna come up and I think she's gonna address your
Okay, thanks.
Just for clarification, you're saying you would like to, in the future years, to kind of get some analysis of how the evictions affect homelessness as well as how the in-loofe has been impacting, um, affordable housing development? Is that?
Yeah, well, more, um, not so much of a analysis unless that's possible, but more just, um, tracking the metrics. I'm just wondering if this report is, you know, would be sort of like a good, um, opportunity to track those metrics? Or if there's some other, um, potentially another report or study that could be done on a yearly basis to track those sorts of metrics?
Yeah, I mean, I think in future years, we'll be able to have more data, but just kind of in, like, the, in a very simple, very simple and not really in-depth analysis, um, what we saw, um, in the changes in the, in-in-loofe's, um, sorry, in the inclusionary housing requirement, we went from twenty, requiring twenty percent affordable housing for all developments to requiring, um, options. So developments could provide some affordable housing and some payment of in-loofe's. What we've seen is in payment of in-loofe's has increased our Affordable Housing Trust Fund that then allows you, um, fund affordable housing projects. And if you look at the numbers in our table, um, you'll see that even though some developments are having trouble getting kick-started, um, there was a pretty good increase in the number of units that we saw from last year to, sorry, from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Um, there's definitely something there, um, but I don't think we have enough information to really say there's like a, you know, clear, you know, measurable impact, um, that's directly related to this until we kind of see future years.
Okay.
Evaluate that a little bit more. But yeah, this is a, definitely a good time to provide that information in the future years. We'll be able to share more.
Okay, yeah, that's great. Um, again, that sounds like a really good initial signal that that policy is working. So I'm really happy to hear that. Um, I guess my other question is around evictions and, you know, specifically or really, not only related to homelessness, but also, um, gentrification? And I'm just wondering if there's a way to maybe perhaps start tracking that? What do you think?
Yeah, we can, we can provide that in future years.
Okay.
To the extent that it's not, you know, impacting anyone's privacy, we can
Right, of course not, yeah.
I guess what would that look like for gentrification? That, that's a pretty layered concept.
I know, it's a tough one. Um, I don't know, Ally, do you have any suggestions or does your staff have any suggestions?
I think we could, I can see how we would be able to start tracking evictions, the number of evictions. Um, I don't know if anyone on our team has kind of a sense of how we start assessing whether that is directly related to gentrification and, um, but something to think about for sure. Um, I'm happy to take any advice on how to measure that from, um, any expert in the planning commission.
Well, I think, uh, University of Berkeley does have a study, is it on like neighborhood and belonging or something like that, um, where they
Otherness, yeah, the otherness and belonging.
Otherness and belonging. So they did have, um, I think that what they used, um, were like maybe eight different demographic groups describing people in the neighborhood of like, I think an example would be something like, um, uh, it had to do with like the level of displacement or, uh, uh, risk of displacement. Um, and there were a few different tiers of that. So I think that it could be something, but that was a very, a very comprehensive study that was done over, I don't know, probably the course of like four to six years. So I don't know if that necessarily translates one to one, but that could be a starting point, I guess. I can, I can send a link over.
Okay, sounds great.
Thank you. Um, I guess I have a question, a follow-up question now that we're having all these questions. Um, it looks like in, I guess, just from knowing what projects are being built and seeing Aegis Living go up, and we know Vivalon's almost complete. Um, my gut feeling is that we're gonna build more units this year than we did in twenty twenty-two, but, um, I don't really have, it's un-evidence-based. Um, there's no evidence in what I'm concluding. Do we, does the, does staff or does the department feel like we are on a trajectory to have more units?
Um, I wish I had like a looking glass.
Of course.
Um, there's definitely, so we have kind of, so we have a number of units that have been approved. We have Northgate Walk, we have seven oh three third street, um, three fifty Mary Dale. Um, we have a number of units at Lock Lowman still to be developed. And so there are definitely a number of units that are entitled. And, um, and we have a number of projects that are gonna be coming before you this year as well. Um, so the hope is that we'll see some of those units developed in this coming year. And I hope, that was my hope last year. Um, and with, you know, it's, it's really, what I'm hearing from developers is right now, they're just, the things that they're looking at are cost of construction, is the cost of construction has started to go down. Now we have these higher interest rates, so there's like, there's uncertainty. And, um, so I don't, I don't know is the answer.
Okay, I was just wondering if, if we had, if there was any, you know, um, data with how things are being permitted and you're seeing action on things. So it's good to see Aegis finally going up and Vivalon on its way. Yeah. Okay, well, I think we're, I think we are gonna probably need to piece together a motion. So it sounds like, from what I'm gathering, we're gonna go ahead and, you know, recommend the report. But we are also gonna need to add, um, we're gonna need to be able to address, um, Bill Carney's, um, requi- or his um, concerns about adding, you know, um, some of the programs for the tree master plan and the inventory?
So, um, for that recommendation, there really, that doesn't need to be a formal recommendation.
Okay.
You know, um, comments that you provided this staff tonight and questions that came up, we'll just automatically include those
Okay.
in a staff report and a presentation to the city council. So, um, there does, you don't have to make a
We don't have to do that. Okay, so then, does it make sense to just, does everyone feel like we can recommend, um, make a motion to recom- to recommend the acceptance of the report? And then we can, or to the city council without any additional comments?
I think John probably.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay, great. Would anyone like to bring forward a motion?
Yeah, Commissioner Samutzi, I move to accept the report and provide to city council.
Can anyone second that?
Second.
Was that Commissioner Pravatali?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll second, sorry.
Right.
Can you provide roll call?
Yes, so the motion from Commissioner Samutzi and the second from Chair Pravatali. Um, Commissioner Mercado is absent. Commissioner Pravatali?
Yes.
Commissioner Samutzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Shock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hedman?
Yes.
And Chair Saudi?
Yes. Great.
All right.
Um, I think we'll move to the director's report now.
Great. So today is the last day of California's COVID emergency, um, which Commissioner Pravatali has taken advantage of. So again, um, starting tomorrow, um, we will request your attendance in person. If you are unable to make it and you really want to attend, there are gonna be, again, it will be a notification through the clerk and there's gonna be some procedures to go through. Um, so otherwise it will be an absence. Um, there will be no planning commission meeting on March fourteenth, but as you heard earlier, we have scheduled a use permit revocation for March twenty-eighth, so that will be the next planning commission hearing. Um, and the DRB is heating up, so, um, for March, and Vice Chair Hedman is the DRB liaison. There are, on March seventh, we have two items scheduled, which is the recommendation for design review for the mixed-use building at fifteen fifteen Fourth Street, um, as well as the wild care fac- uh, facility renovation. So that actually should be kind of an exciting one. Um, and there also is, uh, tentatively scheduled for the twenty-first, three eighty Margarita, which I think you might have attended the last time, so hopefully going through for the final recommendation. So excellent. And that is all for the director's And that is all for the director's report.
Awesome, well, I'm glad to hear wild care is getting updated.
Yeah.
My, everyone loves wild care. All right, my daughter's Girl Scout group just donated to them because every year they, they find a charity that they, they vote on and they want to give their money for their cookies too. So I, it was cool, I was over there a couple of weeks ago. So that's really awesome. Do we have any progress on finding additional planning commissioners?
I do not have an update for you, but I will be sure to have an update for you for next, our next check-in.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, do any other planning commissioners have any additional communication? Okay, I think with that, we will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.